When we have a public hearing, we usually start that first prior to doing the call to order the meeting. So this evening, we have a public hearing to consider the rezoning of 216, 222, 226, South Jefferson Street from an R3 high-density residential to an MU multi-use. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor of the rezoning? Mr. Mendel?
Yes, I will just, I don't know if it's actually in favor. I just explained the planning commission process.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. As you said, this is a rezoning request for 216, 222, and 226, South Jefferson Street from R3 high-density residential to MU multi-use. On April 11th, 2019, the applicant requested a rezoning of the properties from R3 to MU. This was, went through the administrative review process, went to planning commission. It was reviewed at the April 11th, 2019, meeting of the planning commission, reviewing staff's analysis, commentary from the public, and then deliberation by the commission itself. The planning commission did not recommend the requested rezoning to city council as a motion to recommend approval failed by a two to three vote. In your packet, in the packet, there is information that outlines the April 11th, 2019, staff report and packet, the April 15th, 2019, planning commission recommendation resolution, and the April 11th, 2019, planning commission draft minutes. This did go in front of the Finance Committee of City Council on May 13th, 2019. A public notice, a minimum 30-day public notice of this public hearing in front of city council was published as per the city code requirements, and we have the public hearing this evening before city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor of the rezoning? Yes, sir. Push the front microphone up here. Name? I know you don't live in a city because you're a lawyer, so.
Mr. President, members of council. My name is Tony Vicanti with Tucker Ellis. I'm land use counsel on behalf of the applicant and property owner, SDSS Properties. My address is 950 Main Avenue, Suite 1100, Cleveland, Ohio. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and I will try to be brief, but appreciate the opportunity to make this request. We are seeking a rezoning from R3 residential, which these properties are currently zoned, to multi-use or mixed use under your zoning code. What I'd briefly like to do is distribute a packet of info. You have some of this. There's some additional information that I just want to highlight. I'm not going to review everything because I know we've already gone through it. Just briefly describe the acquisition of my client's vision for these properties. Briefly describe the area and why this rezoning makes sense from a legal standpoint and from a practical standpoint, and some of the benefits for the city and for the neighbors. Because, you know, with any rezoning, there's a lot of misperception and misunderstanding, and we'd like to try to dispel some of that and, to the extent, you know, articulate again that we're willing to work with the city and the residents to find a proper use of this property. Overall, I think it's important just to remember, you know, while this is a legislative act, there are certain constitutional requirements, and the Constitution requires that, you know, city council, when you legislate dealing with private property rights, you have to be reasonable and balanced, the private property interests of the community and the private property interests of the subject property owner. And we feel what we're proposing strikes that balance. But we're here. We're open-minded. We're willing to address some of the concerns of the residents that we've heard in our site plan, but we need to move forward with rezoning in order to do that. So with permission of the president, I'd just like to distribute some of these packets, and I'll be brief.
Bring them up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So a representative of my client, Dominic Karinos, here in the audience. He's also the authorized representative of SDSS Properties. He obviously owns Karinos on the west side of Jefferson and Jojo's. Those properties, it's important to note, are zoned C2 commercial, which is a higher-intensity commercial use. He acquired the three subject properties on Jefferson, on the east side of Jefferson Street, with the vision of developing them as mixed use. Before he did so, he did consult with the city, had some initial discussions. It was revealed, under the comprehensive land use plan, these properties were recommended to be rezoned to multi-use, similar to other properties that are similarly situated on Smith, which is immediately adjacent to residential properties, and on Washington, across the street, which is also adjacent to similar residential properties. The vision is a mixed use to maintain the residential streetscape, the residential structures, but to allow a little more flexibility, because these properties are across from high-intensity commercial uses, and it does front on a major truck route, Jefferson Street. It's a commercial corridor. So allowing this flexibility allows the city to maintain these residential properties, because if they are rezoned to multi-use, we can't tear them down. Right now, we can tear them down. That's not our plan, but, you know, there's nothing stopping him from selling them in the future, and someone else may want to do it. So this will preserve in perpetuity these residential structures for multi-use. And what kind of uses are we talking about? We're talking about office, administrative uses, again, similar to the properties across Washington and across Smith, and also residential uses. So that's the vision for the subject property. And in conjunction with that, we did submit a site plan that had some parking, some landscaping, some fencing and buffering. We're open to discussions on those items as part of the site plan review, but obviously this is, we need the rezoning in order to move forward with the site plan. My client is a business owner, has substantially invested millions of dollars in this corner of the city, and has done a pretty good job in maintaining those properties. These residential properties, a lot of them were in disrepair, some of them were vacant. The subject properties, my client has spent over $300,000 in renovating them and continues to do so in reliance on, you know, good planning and zoning and the recommendations of the plan. Now, why is this good planning? I mentioned before that the 2020, or the comprehensive plan indicated that these properties should be rezoned mixed use. The basis under the comprehensive plan was that because they're across from high, you know, intensity commercial development, you need sort of a buffer between that and the residential properties to the east. This mixed-use type of zoning provides that buffer from a planning perspective, and the comprehensive plan rationale just identified that as the reason. Comprehensive plan is not law. It was adopted by council, but it's not the zoning code. It's just a guideline to move forward on a case-by-case basis. But we would submit that the basis and the purpose identified in the comprehensive plan exists today, because it'll provide a nice buffer for the residential properties to the east from the commercial properties to the west. And it will also maintain the streetscape, the residential streetscape, which is important to the city. I know it's important to a lot of the residents who have spoken up, who expressed some concern about these being developed commercially. I think it's clear that these residential structures will remain. So that's some of the benefit. In addition, it's important to understand that this city is obligated to treat similar properties similarly. And at this time, I'd just like to refer to the packet that I just distributed. We've already reviewed Tab 1, which is an aerial of the subject properties. Tab 2 is a little different than the packet I distributed before. It shows the streetscape as it currently exists. You'll see the subject properties across the street is Dominics and Jojo's, and you can see all the commercial properties on the other side of Jefferson. These subject properties face these commercial properties. So under Tab 2, you can see sort of the streetscape and how they are directly across from these commercial properties. That's not conducive to single-family residential, which is what any planner will tell you. That's what the staff report indicated, and that's what the comprehensive plan indicated as well. And the fact that some of these were vacant, not being, not moving on the market, being sold, is indicative of that as well. Under Tab 3 is the site plan, which we've already reviewed, landscaping plan 4, zoning map 5, future land use map 6, which shows these properties identified as mixed use. You have my letter to council articulating the legal basis for our request. I'm not going to rehash that. But I would like to focus on Tab 8, and I think it's important, and I'll conclude here. Tab 8 shows an overview of the area, and you can see there are two black boxes. Those are the properties north on Washington, and then also south on Smith, in the immediate vicinity of our subject property. Those properties likewise are zoned mixed use, consistent with the comprehensive plan, the same type of zoning that my client is requesting and that the comprehensive plan has identified as appropriate for the subject property. If you turn to the next page, you can see these properties. These are the properties on Washington. They're three commercial properties, residential structures with the almost exactly, very similar type of parking that my client was proposing. These are immediately across from the historical house on Washington. I know the owner had some concerns about the, but these properties already exist, and they're across from that house. My client's proposing nothing any different. As a matter of fact, is willing to scale down some of the items that try and address some of the residents' concerns. The third page, again, shows some of these commercial properties. It's Kingdom Title, I believe. The next page shows this cigar shop, and then there are, the third house has some offices. Further down Jefferson, a couple houses down from my client's properties, is a dentist's office that has onsite parking. So again, that's on the residential side. So the character of this area is already mixed use, as the city has intended. The final two pages show some properties on Smith. Again, these are mixed-use properties, substantially similar to my client's properties. They're commercial with residential structures, commercial use with parking. My client's just requesting to be treated the same way as some of these other properties. I understand rezoning is not always popular, and it's not easy to be in city council's position with regards to this. But my client will commit to you the working with the city, with the residents, to provide a site plan that allows the economically feasible use of these properties, consistent with what the city has already allowed in this area. It's going to benefit the city and the neighbors because it's going to maintain those residential structures. It's going to provide buffering. There were concerns about, most of the concerns centered on Jojo's and Dominics late at night, people at the bar being loud. Well, we're willing to put parking restrictions on those properties. This will allow for that type of buffering. I know there were concerns about the residential tenants on some of these properties being loud. By allowing this rezoning, you're going to get rid of those residential tenants and allow commercial use, regular hours, which should quiet things down. So there are a lot of benefits to this. I know it's not an easy question for council. I know there's some legal issues involved as well, but I'm here on behalf of the property owners, saying we want to work with the city. It's proper from a land use perspective. We just ask that the city respect my client's private property rights, take into consideration the neighbors' rights, and we strike a balance. And we believe that this zoning strikes that balance, again, as recognized in the staff report, the comprehensive plan, and any professional planner, you know, that would articulate on this issue. So appreciate council's consideration of this matter. Happy to entertain any questions, but I know you probably want to hear from the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in favor of the rezoning? Is there anybody that wishes to speak in opposition of the rezoning? Yes, sir. Do you have? Yeah, you're the one to raise your hand. Do you have a? Can you, you gotta stay up there. Is there a microphone that we can give him, Miles?
Can't we just hand it to him if he comes over there?
Yeah, he's going to hand it to him. He hasn't got an extra mic.
I'm just going to hand it over to him.
That's what they're doing. We don't have a long enough cord? Nope. You guys have a long cord under your desk over there.
Stand right there. Like about 20 feet.
State your name and address so it can be entered into the minutes.
My name is Mike Michael Schwinn. I live at 230 South Jefferson, which is the house immediately south of the three properties. My chief objection is the overflow parking from across the street and what that'll do at 2:30 or 3:00 in the morning. You get people over there, they're loud, the motorcycles are loud. It's right next to me. My wife goes to work at 4:00 in the morning. She won't be able to sleep. We've had, the people living in the house next door, they've come out, they come across the backyard. We've asked them not to, and they do it anyway. They don't seem to have much respect for the neighbors. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. The other problem I had with it was at the zoning or the planning commission meeting, I saw a site plan. They had all these lights that were 12 feet tall. They were going to be, they're going to be shining in my house at night. And I don't, it's just, it doesn't strike me as I want to live in the middle of that. Across the street, it was there, it's see-whatever, and that's fine. But we've been a quiet, peaceful neighborhood. They refer to the truck traffic. That is the doing of the city when they made Reagan as a bypass and then don't allow trucks on it. That's why we get all the trucks. They're bypassing the square. They don't want to drive through the square. The dentist has been there forever. In fact, the guy before him was a dentist. He's kind of grandfathered in. And the dentist isn't a problem. His patients, they come, they're quiet, they leave. There's nothing goes on there at night. John is a hell of a nice guy. We've used his parking, you know, when we don't have enough room in our driveway, and he doesn't object. This will change the character of everything we have. That was peaceful and quiet and clean. I don't want the litter. I don't want the beer bottles. I don't want, you know, none of the stuff that we have or had, we'll have it again, and it'll be worse, because now they'll be right on top of us. I don't want it. I'm here to say that. I said it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition of the rezoning? Yes, sir. Skip.
Thanks, Eric. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Got one specially for you.
Thank you. Oh, you have handouts too for us?
Thank you.
Everybody got them? Okay, thank you. Skip Barron, 536 North Broadway Street, Medina, just up the road. I'm speaking as a representative of the Medina Community Design Committee as a board member. And I will be, normally I just speak off the cuff, as you know, but I will be reading a statement that the Community Design Committee put together. Dear Mayor Handwell and members of city council, the Medina Community Design Committee has spent over 50 years encouraging the restoration and preservation of Medina's historical buildings and homes. The heart of the city of Medina, its historic and vibrant downtown, is a culmination of decades of building and business owners working to restore and preserve the architecture and space which has become nationally recognized. Downtown Medina is a destination location for those seeking to enjoy the shops, restaurants, and open space situated within this unique historical venue. We are here this evening to express our concerns pertaining to the rezoning of the properties located at 216, 222, and 226, South Jefferson, from an R3 high-density residential to MU multi-use. The block in which this rezoning is being requested lies between two significant transportation corridors in the heart of Medina, and this area is also only one-half block east of the historic downtown district. The block in which the three South Jefferson properties are located is zoned R3 high-density urban residential and consists primarily of residences. The block north of these properties is zoned a combination of R3 high-density urban residential and MU multi-use, both of which utilize the existing housing stock and land in a fashion that conveys a residential or neighborhood appearance. And those of you that know it, understand that when you drive in on that, on the road, those look just like houses. The parking has been placed in the back, and you don't even know that they're businesses. Traditional corridor overlay districts encompass both the north and south sides of East Washington and East Smith Roads. The overlay district requires businesses to maintain their buildings and properties in such a manner that is harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood. Additionally, the block in which South Jefferson properties are located is considered historic residential, according to the city's Neighborhood Action Plan. And the council has the pages showing the maps in their packet. A review of the city's existing land use map, zoning district map, transitional corridor overlay district map, and the neighborhood's action plan map, and future land use map, all of which are posted on the city's website, indicate no new commercial zoning or development in this area. These maps depict traveling east or to west, a gradual transition from residential medium density to residential high-density with a transitional corridor overlay district along the main thoroughfares prior to entering the historic downtown area. And to sum it up, the Community Design Committee supports the city's current vision, as conveyed through the aforementioned documents, that there be gentle and harmonious melding of land use in the areas approaching the historic downtown area, thus maintaining Medina's hometown charm. Sincerely, the Board of the Medina Community Design Committee. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition? Yes.
I don't have a packet for you. My name is Amy Barnes. I live at 314 East Washington Street, Medina. I am the owner of the Colonel H.G. Blake House, which is on the National Register of Historic Places, and is located at the corner of East Washington and South Jefferson, with part of the property on South Jefferson and the rest facing East Washington. I am here tonight with a petition signed by 50 people. We are asking that you deny the request to change the zoning from residential to multi-use for the properties situated at 216, 222, and 226, South Jefferson, and thus deny the installation of a parking lot at the aforementioned properties. There are three properties in question back into the historic Colonel H.G. Blake House property and adjoining another privately-owned home. Many times in discussions regarding the rezoning, the comprehensive plan has been brought up because it shows the areas possibly being changed to multi-use zoning in the future. But the comprehensive plan is not set in concrete for a reason. It is a projection of possible future zoning changes, with those projected changes depend on many changing factors, because those who drew up the master, the comprehensive plan do not know what the future will bring any more than I have the winning lottery ticket numbers. The designers of the master plan did not predict the housing shortage that has occurred. They could not predict that good people would want to and do remain in the neighborhood, maintaining its residential feel and flavor. The properties in question can and have yielded a reasonable return as residential properties. When the properties were purchased, they were zoned residential, and two of the three homes had occupants, while the third was for sale by owner. In fact, the residents of one of the houses had rented there for 20 years and had no intention of moving. In a zoning meeting, it was mentioned that the house listed for sale had difficulty selling. I had spoken more than once with the former owner of that property, and he refused to have it represented by a real estate agent or to advertise it for sale. Other than a small sign in the front yard, and he readily admitted to me, he was asking for a price well above the house's market value. After the zoning commission denied petitioner's request for zoning change, I sent numerous people who were looking for houses to rent to petitioner. Because he complained in a zoning meeting, he had difficulty renting them. All three houses are currently occupied. A zoning change will cause an increase in traffic, noise, and congestion at a corner that already suffers from heavy traffic, and change the neighborhood from being overwhelmingly commercial and paved. The zoning should remain residential to maintain the social fabric, local history, natural beauty, and texture and integrity of the neighborhood. A previous city council agreed. 20 years ago, just before I bought the Colonel H.G. Blake House, the previous owner sought to turn the house into a bed-and-breakfast inn and to sell the attached side property that is on the corner of Washington and Jefferson to tonight's petitioner, so he could turn it into a parking lot. The homeowners were denied based on the city's desire to maintain this large space of 1.5 acres so close to the square as residential green space. We are asking for that intent to continue to be honored. Petitioner has said numerous times that he's requesting the zoning change to provide additional parking for his restaurant and bar. Paul Calverisi, Sr., took a look at the parking area that the petitioner currently owns and came up with a new design that would add an additional 15 spaces to the parking lot. He offered his redesign to petitioner for no charge and offered to explain it in detail. Last I heard, his offer was declined. The petitioner's current parking lot alone is more parking than any other square-area restaurant owns. He also has full and easy access to the library parking after the library closes, the courthouse parking, which is empty at night, and the 350-space parking deck across the street from his business. If petitioner's customers walk to the corner of Washington and Jefferson to legally and safely cross the street, it is actually a shorter walk to the parking deck than it would be to the proposed lots on Jefferson. I realize, as I said, that there is a thought throughout the room that petitioner's customers will simply jaywalk to cross Jefferson. Exactly. Which makes it much more dangerous to open those lots to extra parking for petitioner's businesses. Jaywalking across Jefferson with as much traffic as travels on the two-way street is very dangerous and would be irresponsible to encourage patrons to cross the street in that manner. The zoning change that petitioner is requesting is not natural law, nor is it economic inevitability. It is a function of power and wealth. He purchased three homes, fully aware of what the zoning was, and now wants to change the neighborhood that he does not live in, while claiming he is filling a need that does not exist. We may not be able to afford lawyers or be able to purchase a substantial number of a neighborhood's properties, but we still have the right to have the neighborhood that we live in remain the wonderful textured mix it is, instead of becoming an overpaid disor. What is the highest and best use of these properties? Is it to add more commercial space in a city where there are many vacant storefronts in such areas as North Court? Is it to eliminate housing when there is a housing shortage? Is it to add additional bland parking areas where there are so many available, including the 350 spaces across a one-way street from petitioner's business? Or is it to maintain the atmosphere and look of an older neighborhood where the houses are not cookie cutters and they represent an era of Medina, different from the square, mixed with the rich history of the Colonel H.G. Blake House? We hope you honor our plea to not allow Medina to lose yet another of the ingredients that make it charming and unique and make people want to move to and visit Medina again and again. We ask that you will see your way to deny the requested zoning change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition? Pam?
Thank you, Mr. Coyne. My name is Pamela Miller, 450 Woodland Drive, Medina. I'm a former councilperson and former member of the planning commission. I'm speaking against the rezoning request for the properties on South Jefferson because there is not a compelling reason to re- Pam?
Thank you, Mr. Coyne. My name is Pamela Miller, 450 Woodland Drive, Medina. I'm a former councilperson and former member of the Planning Commission. I'm speaking against the rezoning request for the properties on South Jefferson because there is not a compelling reason to rezone the properties, and to do so would create spot zoning on the block in question. The applicant claims that the city's Economic Development Director and Community Development Director suggested that he pursue this course as a means of gaining more parking for his restaurant and bar located across the street, even though his business is across the street from the said parking garage and near to many lots and spaces throughout the historic district. He had to have known that neither of these individuals had the authority to make the rezoning happen, but he went ahead and purchased the properties and has even gone so far as to clear-cut the backyards in anticipation of putting in parking lots. His cover letters to the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals were ambiguous in describing the planned use for the houses on these properties, indicating that they might be residential, but they might also be commercial. And there was no overall concept presented to the Planning Commission for a development that would benefit the community. The Planning Commission acted reasonably responsibly in denying this request, and hopefully you have read the transcripts from the Planning Commission meeting, as well as the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, and seen the comments from neighbors and others. The city's comprehensive plan does play an important role in future land use planning, suggesting that changes might be beneficial in certain areas of the city if circumstances warrant, which is not the case here. Zoning changes should only be considered when changes have occurred in a neighborhood that prevent the use of the land as originally zoned. Zoning changes should also depend on any future plans for surrounding properties. This neighborhood, along South Jefferson, the south side of East Washington, the west side of Spring Grove, the north side of East Smith, and the side streets between Washington and Smith, is predominantly single-family residential with a few exceptions. There is no trend that would suggest a change in zoning to MU for any part of this East Washington neighborhood. And surely, the city would embark on a comprehensive study involving the residents if it thought that zoning changes would be desirable. That has not happened in this case. Bear in mind, too, that the comprehensive plan is sadly out of date and really should be reviewed. In the intervening years, there has been a renewed effort to maintain and support the residential nature of the neighborhoods adjacent to the square. Furthermore, as Councilperson Rose stated at the Planning Commission, and as Mrs. Barnes just said, the city needs residential parking, housing. As a matter of fact, there is a nationwide shortage of affordable homes, so we should not be quick to convert or demolish viable homes, especially in the historic neighborhoods abutting the historic district. With property marketing, any of the real estate firms in the Medina area could successfully sell or rent these houses on South Jefferson to potential homeowners. Spot zoning these properties serves no useful purpose to the adjoining properties. To single out these three properties for a use that is different from that of the surrounding area for the benefit only of the owner of such property, and especially because that owner wants to utilize the property to accommodate a business that is across the street in still another zoning category, is to create a situation that is detrimental to the other property owners. Council must evaluate whether it is in the public interest to change this zoning, what its effect will be on neighborhood properties, and what ramifications will be created if a change is made. You should also consider the real reason that this applicant desires the change and acknowledge that it is an unacceptable premise. I urge you to uphold the recommendation by the Planning Commission to deny this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition?
Good evening, all. I, too, do not have a packet, so sorry. My name is Elizabeth Biggins-Raimer. I reside at 141 South Prospect Street. I am here this evening representing the Bankers Row Historic Neighborhood Association, which is one of the five historic neighborhoods that have been formed to preserve the residential nature of the original village of Medina. And these activities have occurred over the course of the last several years in support of our lovely downtown area. Many of these historic neighborhoods also have mixed use throughout their particular boundaries through what is called the overlay district. For example, Bankers Row, which does abut West Liberty, has an overlay district on West Liberty, which means the homes along that area can be used residentially and commercially, however keeping with the flavor of the residential neighborhood. Since the inception of the historic neighborhood associations, several of the homes, not only in our neighborhood, but other of the historical neighborhoods, have actually been purchased and converted from the businesses they had been prior back to residential use, because these homes embrace the flavor of our Medina, as well as some extraordinary architectural values. The preservation of the inner-ring neighborhoods provides economic support to our historic downtown and the flavor of Medina in general. We would hope that you consider the actions of the historic neighborhood associations as they have supported the downtown, and in return, consider supporting a neighborhood to stay a neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition to the rezoning?
Can I ask a question?
Mr. Lamb has a question.
Jonathan?
Let me ask a question.
How many times, do you have an idea, how many times in recent history, 10, 20 years, how many times has council overridden a Planning Commission vote? How rare is that?
I know in the five and a half years I've worked for the city of Medina, it has not occurred, and I didn't search the history of Planning Commission and council decisions on that.
No, that's sufficient, right. I mean, my point is that, and I think you clarified it for me, it is a pretty rare occurrence that council would override a Planning Commission vote. Would you agree with that?
My experience shows that it has not happened.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Hearing no more comment, I will call the public hearing closed. Now, we have an Eagle Scout among us, and I'm going to ask James Feeks to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would step by the microphone.
Give me a minute to get down.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Feeks.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Simpson.
Here.
Starcher.
Here.
Coyne.
Here.
Heffinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Reading of minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of June 10, 2019, is prepared and submitted by the clerk. Be approved.
Second.
Discussion on the approval of the minutes? Clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven zero.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to council will again meet the last time before break on July 8. Health, Safety, and Sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and nothing to report this evening.
Special Legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no meetings scheduled until after the break, but we did hold a meeting just a week ago tonight, on Monday, and special legislation passed, the ordinances out to send them up to Finance on the LGBTQ legislation that was also passed through Finance Committee tonight.
Thank you. Streets and Subblocks, Mr. Heffinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report at this time, and there are no meetings scheduled at this time.
Water and Utilities, Mr. Starcher.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have no report and no meeting scheduled at this time.
Emerging Technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did have a meeting last Wednesday evening with the Medina County Fiber Loop and Lit Communities. They're talking about the plans, which they are currently executing right now in southern Medina County, where they're bringing fiber optics to the home. This is an interesting concept. They presented a lot of propeller head-type information, but it was well-received by the residents who showed up. If you would go to, I forget the name of the website now, I'll get it and I'll have them publish it. To find out the information, the mayor, it several times, has provided that to the public to go out, register, take the survey. The more people that they find that there is an interest to bring the fiber loop to the city of Medina, or the next location, whichever that may be, they'll be, they'll be looking at that information to make their next move. So, the, so far, the places that they've used this out west, in Washington State, Utah, and places like that, has been well, very well-received. It's, just to be clear, it's not full cable, full internet access. All it is, is the pipeline to get you there. You do purchase, your telephone, your tele-med, and other apps on top of that then, too. But it, the amount of data that you'd be allowed to use for the price that you're going to pay is far below what the current published prices are from other vendors in the city of Medina now, so. Look at the fiber network, or medinafibernetwork.com, and you'll be able to see all the information that they have and be able to take the survey. As far as the next meeting, we will be, sometime after we come back from the break, having a meeting with Armstrong to show what they're doing now. They have recently announced bringing fiber into the city of Medina, and we'll be able to see what they're, they have to offer and details on that as we work that out. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to dispel one misconception that I commonly hear throughout the community is that we are not prohibiting any other cable company from coming into the city. Armstrong is a provider, and we would gladly have other providers, but they, there's a cost barrier that they don't want to incur to come into the city, so that's why we don't have other cable companies. It's a matter of cost.
Just, just to that point there, in some cases, it costs $20,000 per pole to hang a line, so that's part of the reason.
Thank you. Request for council action, the Finance Committee has several. 19-112, amend Lafayette Township Law Enforcement Services Agreement. 19-113, fiscal year 18 chip, private rehab at 3877 Miller Drive in Brunswick, Ohio. 19-114, CDBG Citizens Participation Plan Update. 19-115, 2019 codified update, codification update for Walter Drain. 19-116, increased PO 2019, 513 ORDC soft cost for fiscal year 18 chip grant. 19-117, bids for South Broadway Reconstruction Project. 19-118, grant application, ODOT South Prospect Street Bridge. 19-119, job creation grant payment for Discount Drug Mart. And 19-120, job creation grant payment for Sandrich Food Corp. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamill.
Thank you, Mr. President. The parking deck is being bid for the second time, south of City Hall here, and once we get that back, there'll be a panel to review, and I believe council's going to have a special meeting to award that bid during their time off in the summer, and then we'll get that project going as quickly as we can. It's going to take it into the spring now, obviously, because of this delayed start. As a result, while that parking deck is being built, the Sully's lot will be closed, the lot to the west of Sully's patio will be closed in its entirety, both for staging and construction, and a good deal of the City Hall lot will be closed as well. We're going to try to maintain a few for handicap and patrons to come in for permits and short visits. There are long-term lots at the southeast corner of West Liberty Street and South Elmwood, the lot on the west side of the 200-block of South Elmwood across from Napa, as well as the existing parking deck on Common Pleas. The Medina County Community Band, free concerts on the square are continuing each Friday night, weather permitting. They have them every Friday in June and July, as well as on July 4, and they start promptly at 8:30 p.m. Farmer's Market is each Saturday on the square from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. On Thursday, June 27, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m., the Medina County Board of Developmental Disabilities will host a ice cream social on the square. The City of Medina fireworks will be put off at Medina High School on July 3 at dark. This is co-supported with both Medina and Motville Townships, as well as the city. The City of Medina July 4 parade will be on July 4. The lineup starts at 3:00 p.m. in the student lot of the Medina High School and starts promptly at 4:00 p.m. It goes south on Spring Grove from Medina High School to East Liberty Street, and then around the square and breaks up in the county parking area by the deck there. Applications for the parade and the release forms are available at the mayor's office. Or Mako's going to present jazz under the sky, under the stars on the square Saturday, July 6, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And I'd like to thank Councilman Paul Rose, Denny Simpson, and Bob Starcher for attending all six ribbon cuttings on Friday, June 21, as well as Councilman Bill Lamb and Jim Shields for attending the Firehouse Community Room ribbon cutting at 5:00 p.m. on Friday, June 21. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Director Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, we're proceeding with budgets, and we will have the tax budget at the next meeting, and that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Chief Kenny, Police Department?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've filled one of our two vacant patrol officer positions. Xavier Payton will be sworn in July 1. She'll then start her FTO program shortly after her swearing, and we are continuing with interviews to fill that last position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report, and the next Rec Advisory Committee meeting is Thursday, July 18, at 7:30 a.m. at the Rec Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not have a report.
Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick report. Last week, I think most folks know, we finished the work on the intersection of East Smith and Court, East Smith and Broadway. Did cost some traffic congestion the two days, Monday and Tuesday. We have one more item to do this Friday. We'll be installing the crosswalks, the decorative crosswalks on Broadway. This shouldn't be as disruptive as what we did last week, but Broadway, North and South bound will be closed Friday, reopened on Monday. Smith Road will stay open the entire time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a long report. Actually, I don't. Service crews have been responding to flooded property calls in the last few weeks. We're fortunate that our residents didn't receive the flooded basements like the other communities. You heard the mayor reference the Engine House Community Room. Well, that completion was two years in the making. There was a great collaborative effort from many groups, donations from the CDC, the Mr. and Mrs. Murray Van App, Mike Morris, the, and family, the former council president, great collaborative effort from Todd Mason and the Career Center kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Confirmation of mayor's appointments, if there's no objection, I would like to adopt both of the mayor's appointments at the same time. Hearing no objection, the Civil Service Commission, Delmar Jones, term expiring 6/30/2025, and Medina County Energy Special Improvement Board, Kimberly Marshall, the mayor's appointment.
Move to confirm the mayor's appointments. Second.
Is there any discussion on the mayor's appointments? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval, confirmation of the mayor's appointments?
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven zero.
We have one confirmation of a council appointment, that's Medina County Energy Special Improvement Board, the Water and Utilities Chair, which is currently Bob Starcher, the City Council Appointment.
Move to confirm council appointment. Second.
Any discussion on the council's appointment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the council appointment?
Lamb. Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven zero.
Notices, communications, and petitions, we don't have one today. Unfinished business, non-introduction of visitors. Members of the public who have been given the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the council, in a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. Members, all comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address, so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting, as determined by the chair by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Yes. of the meeting as determined by the chair by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time?
Yes. All right, we have one.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. Oh, thanks for having me. Adam Kristowski, 985 Norwegian Wood Drive. So, since the last, uh, couple months, my neighborhood, which is on the west side of town, has had some tremendous issues with the noise coming from Carlisle brake and friction. So I've been to city council meeting several times, um, in recent times, uh, I believe last week, we received a letter, um, from city council written by Mr. Dan Gladish that basically, nothing was gonna happen. So, I would like to read something from my neighborhood. So we are not big-name, big-bank-account, politically-elite folks. We're middle-class professionals, we're small-business owners, we're superintendents and retirees caring for elder, retirees caring, caring for our elderly parents, we're stay-at-home moms, Sunday-school teachers, T-ball and soccer coaches. We invest every day in this town by our work and our volunteer time. We are what you want in a city that prides itself on quality of life and community. So a couple weeks ago, I was watching the NBA Finals at night, even with the dryer running, a noise from Carlisle made me jump so loud I almost fell off the couch. My kids come inside to tell me that there's a thunderstorm coming. Nope, it's just the incredibly loud rumbles consistently rolling out of the Carlisle dumpsters and into our peaceful neighborhood. You've all heard the tornado siren testing on Saturdays at noon in Medina. From my house, the siren can be drowned out by the Carlisle rumbling, droning, crashing, beeping, and banging. My five-year-old son wears hearing protection when he's outside so that he doesn't have to fear the loud noises and be bothered by it. Imagine the noise of a stranger mowing your yard and the sound, the sound of random thunder uh, every day of the week at all hours of the day. So when Carlisle says the measured noise is acceptable, I'm sure it was not recorded during times like this. And would you accept the word of Carlisle on their noise if this was your backyard? At the first council meeting, we heard from multiple city council members that knew nothing about this issue. Months later, not, even with their knowledge, nothing has been done. Second council meeting, Dan Gladish told me that Carlisle has agreed to meet with us. Councilmember Shields said we would receive letters in our mailbox with a plan for time and date. Nothing ever came. Two weeks later, at the next council meeting, we were told that the Carlisle would indeed not meet with us, and that members of the council had met with them instead. Now some officials were quick to give us, would, some officials will be quick to give us the Carlisle PR line, and we expect that, but we don't expect that from our council members who are specifically tasked with helping our neighborhoods. This isn't DC, this isn't Columbus, this is local politics, and the residents of Medina, the ordinary people of Strawberry Fields deserve better representation against problems created by the city, who voted to put a neighborhood next to an industrial zone, and even more recently, approved the Carlisle expansion without giving us any protection or consideration. So, a July 2017 Gazette article on the Carlisle expansion was, was quoted with Ted Messmer saying, "We've had tremendous support from the city of Medina, Medina County, and the state of Ohio." Carlisle President Ted Messmer. When the city was giving Carlisle this tremendous support, what city official looked out for our neighborhood next door to see how we might be affected? What city official told Carlisle that they are excited for the business opportunity and the revenues that it brings to the city, but asked Carlisle to maybe consider some provisions for the neighborhood right next door? Perhaps if someone had been looking out for our interests, this 24-hour industrial noise would not have been put with the loudest portions being the closest parts to our houses. We're talking presses, scrap dumping, and diesel engines roaring for loud periods of time, constructed literally as the closest parts to our neighborhood, 500 feet from the bedrooms of children, the elderly, and all those in between. Perhaps adding noise barriers could have been negotiated with Carlisle as part of their expansion plans, or better yet, the solution could have been as simple as locating the dumpsters and the roaring diesel engines on the other side of the building, so that the noise didn't affect the neighbor's quality of life. So when the leaves fall this autumn and all the trees have lost their leaves and the noise is even louder, I hope you'll walk to the property, walk the property lines again, but not with Carlisle, with us, and without telling them. Come to our side, walk our backyards, and see if this quality of life is, would be acceptable to you and your children, and, and consider whether or not it's acceptable to those you've been elected to represent. So we, the ordinary people, the everyday investors in Medina, hope you'll do more to provide the same tremendous support to the neighborhoods and not just the industrial businesses. And literally before I was leaving the house, my five-year-old son said, "Dad, can you please ask them to be quiet at night so I don't have to wear earmuffs anymore?" Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time?
President, council, council, mayor, the rest of the administration, I am Pat Walker. I live at 523 East Friendship Street in Medina. I'm here tonight speaking as a resident of the city of Medina. I'm speaking on the courthouse project. First of all, the courthouse project is substantial. It's going to cost anywhere from 38 million to 45 million or more. This is a lot of money. This is the type of project that the voters of the city of Medina and the county of Medina should have a say in by vote. Now I understand with the city's portion that they may not need to have a vote, and also the county may not have, need to have a vote, but with the county, I understand that they're going to pay for this by bonds. This is an awful lot of bonds, and this is an awful lot of commitment for the county. This should go to the voters. It may not have to go to the voters, but it is one of those issues that should go to the voters. Secondly, not everybody who is in the current courthouse has been consulted about the square footage that's needed, what their needs are be, what their needs will be 50 years from now. So the issue of what square footage, um, needs for the courthouse has not been determined. It's up in the air, it's something that needs to be looked at. Tonight I learned that council is going to add to their agenda, or at least, um, is thinking of adding to their agenda, a proposal to authorize $70,000 in design costs to be paid for the project. This should be delayed until there is more certainty. I urge the council to delay this since it wasn't on the regular agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council? You already did once. Okay, you can do it again.
Sorry, something hurt me. I thought...
Hi, I won't take too much of your time. I hope this is acceptable. Um, I just wanted to, in general, um, explain that the project that we presented earlier to the finance committee is not a one-time project. The project that we talked about to you folks is the beginning of a long-term project, hopefully, that will help revitalize the inner core of Medina. So again, it's not just a one-time project. If you allow us to go forward, uh, hopefully you will see some great, uh, results. Thank you.
Thank you, Skip. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council? Nope? Okay. Well, at this time, I'd like to call, uh, James Feeks IV. Up to the front for a resolution. Not to confuse you, not to go too far. Well, we have a resolution, it's called Resolution Number 91-19. It's a resolution congratulating James Feeks IV on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. I'm gonna read it, and then we'll vote on it, okay? Uh, whereas James Feeks IV is currently a member of Troop 508 from Medina Presbyterian Church, and whereas as a result of considerable hard work in the areas of citizenship, physical fitness, character, and leadership development, James Feeks received his Eagle Scout Award, the highest award attainable in scouting, and now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Medina, Ohio, that the Medina City Council hereby commends James Feeks for his outstanding contribution to his community and Boy Scout Troop 508 in obtaining the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout. That a signed copy of this resolution shall be presented to James Feeks IV in recognition of his hard work and dedication in obtaining this award. That this resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest period allowed by law.
It is my great, uh, pleasure and honor to move that Resolution 91-19 to honor Mr. Feeks. Be approved. And I'm honored to second that, Mr. Feeks.
Will the clerk please call a roll?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Resolution 91-19 passes 7-0.
Congratulations. They always try to run away. We would like to know what your Eagle Scout, uh, project was.
Yeah, so if you don't mind, I actually wrote that down.
Okay. We didn't want you to forget that.
Um, so, October of 2017, I went to the Medina County home with my father and met with the director of Medina County Home, Amy Perrine. Uh, she showed us the property and showed us the various things that she'd like to see completed. I learned that the home is founded by Medina County taxes, and the residents that live there faced a day-to-day challenges of living due to their physical or mental disabilities. The director, Amy, showed us, showed us the residents' favorite place to sit, which is about a 15-to-20-year-old pergola shelter. The residents sit under the pergola to wait for the bus, talk to the other, talk to other residences, or view the property's 80 acres. Uh, in the 15-to-20 years of its old life, the pergola was starting to take a turn for the worst. The roof had holes in it, allowing snow and rain to seep through, boards were rotting, and it needed attention. So I decided to renovate the pergola. I was able to get the project approved, and I met with Glenn Brant, uh, the owner of Medina Roofing, to discuss the project. He listed all the materials that I would need and said that he would help me complete the project. In the following weeks, I met with Medina County, or Medina Oddfellow Morning Star Lodge, number 26. The Oddfellows is a group in Medina County that helped, that helps out in the community, or in Medina that helps out in the community. For example, uh, a few years ago, around Christmas, they just, they helped with, uh, shop a cop, shop with a cop. Uh, a few years ago, they organized a Christmas tree sale that all proceeds going to local charities. They donated all the money that I would need for my project, and the project began, uh, began. I ordered the materials from Low-Dye Lumber, and in late July, we started. We tore off the roof and replaced it with a new one, added additional support, applied new facial boards to replace the rotting ones, and when we were done with, uh, we painted the whole thing. When we had finished, I had about $200 remaining, so I decided to buy three rocking chairs from Home Depot and have new chairs for the residents to sit in. I cannot thank everyone who helped with my project.
Congratulations again. Now we have, um, ordinance 92-19, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of equipment from Par Public Safety Equipment to outfit new police cruisers for the police department.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Chief Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. President. As stated, this is for equipment for the five vehicles that were authorized for purchase uh, earlier this year. It's the outfit, it's, uh, all-state bid equipment.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance 92-19 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 93-19, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a plat of survey to create new parcel at 625 Bowman Lane.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Rose?
Uh, the emergency clause has been requested. I ask, uh, I move to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance, Mr. Patton.
Thank you. Uh, this will give the authorization to have the mayor sign for the city for this minor subdivision plat creating that lot at 625 Bowman Lane.
And the emergency clause?
Oh, the emergency clause, this was, uh, delayed to create the lot, we had to go through Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, and we had to go through there twice because the original plat, um, unbeknownst to us, had an error, uh, so we had to go back to Board of Zoning Appeals, which happened last week, and we'd like to get this done so that the transaction between the city and the school district can be completed.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
Uh, because this ordinance and the next ordinance involve my employer, Medina City Schools Board of Education, I'll need to abstain.
Okay. Will the clerk please call a roll on the emergency clause?
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Abstain.
93-19 passes six yeas, one abstention.
Ordinance 94-19, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a declaration of mutual easements and cooperation agreement with the Board of Education of the Medina City School District relative to Reagan Park, Eliza Northrup Connector Trail Project.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Rose?
The emergency clause has been requested. I ask to move it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance.
I got it.
Mayor.
So, um, Jancz is not here tonight, so this is going to be a, uh, trail that leads to the back of, uh, Eliza Northrup School and down into the, uh, city park and parking lot. This is an advantage to both the, uh, the city and the schools because it, it provides another egress area, as well as the chance for the, uh, children to come down through the park and use the park for, for, uh, programs. Uh, it also provides additional parking for the city, uh, when we may have events at the park and the school is not in session, that we could, uh, take advantage of their parking lot as well. The reason for the executive, I'm sorry, the, not executive, so, the emergency clause is that, um, the school is trying to get this project going yet this year and would like to do so as soon as possible.
Thanks, Mayor Hamill. Is there any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Heffinger?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Abstain.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Lamb?
You skipped me.
Okay. Lamb?
I, I, I come after Heffinger.
Sorry about that.
Yes.
Motion passes six yeas, one abstention.
The clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Coin?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Abstain.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Ordinance 94-19 passes six yeas, one abstention.
Resolution 95-19, a resolution accepting the grant award from the Ohio Law Enforcement Body Armor Program to purchase body armor vests for the police department.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and resolution. Chief Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a grant award from the state of Ohio, and we're requesting permission to accept this grant. The emergency clause is requested, the grant needs to be accepted by June thirtieth.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the resolution? Clerk, please call a roll on the adoption of the emergency clause.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Clerk, please call a roll on the adoption of the resolution.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Resolution ninety-five dash nineteen passes seven zero.
Ordinance ninety-six nineteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Delta Airport Consultants, Inc., for the professional services for the Medina Municipal Airport.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, I moved it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance, Mr. Huber.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance allows for an agreement between the city and Delta Airport Consultants for engineering on the proposed detention basin that we are required to construct in order to meet the standards from Medina County with respect to surface water runoff. The emergency clause is requested as we're trying to get this project done, or at least underway during the current building season, and we're getting a little late.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call a roll on the adoption of the emergency clause.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Clerk, please call a roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Abstain.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Clerk, please call a roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Clerk, please call a roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-seven dash nineteen passes seven zero.
We have a request to add a ordinance number ninety-eight nineteen.
Move to add ninety-eight dash nineteen to the agenda.
Second.
Discussion on adding ordinance ninety-eight nineteen?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Is this the seventy thousand dollars we're adding?
Ordinance ninety-eight nineteen is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Board of Commissioners of the Medina County, Ohio, to share construction management services for a joint construction and management of a county-city courthouse. Yes.
Okay, so, I'm going to vote for this, but as I stated downstairs at the finance meeting, I think we really need to get the funding, decide exactly how we will be funding this relative to money from or not from the Muni Court, and that I view this as we have the cart before the horse, because we are putting money in and we have not committed as a body, we haven't come to an agreement on the funding that would follow. But in consideration of the opinion of six of you and, and the mayor, and I do not want to derail the project now, I mean, I wouldn't want to derail the project, I am going to vote for it.
Yes, you are correct, there's an issue of how it actually is going to be funded, through what accounts and through what participation level between the current municipal court and the city of Medina, so that would have to be discussed. But in order to go forward and make it even a determination about what we're going to do, we need to expend these funds to enable the architect to start talking to the various judges and the law library, to make a determination of what is actually needed, so we know how much money we need to come up with. Without going through this process, we will never know what is exactly going to be needed, because I think that process is just starting, which includes public input from the Historic Society, CDC, about actually what will be done at the courthouse, but without doing this, we'll, I guess, we'll never know. But I do agree with you and understand your concern about spending some money before